Well, I'm gonna lead the invocation. Oh, there she is. There she is. Wait a second. Councilwoman Boyle, would you lead us in the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Sorry, Rich. I had some technical issues. Apologies. The invocation and Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes.
Okay. If you would all join me with to say the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy kingdom. Thy will be done. Give us to stay our daily bread and our trespasses. As we forgive those trespass against us. Send us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic
Justice for all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Boyle. I'd like to ask Clerk Councilman Forrest to please call the roll.
Councilwoman Boyle?
Here.
Councilwoman Gillig?
Here.
Councilwoman Yanatuno?
Here.
Councilman Jones?
Since I learned a new word, I'm gonna say here.
Councilman Leopard?
Present.
Councilman Perry?
Present.
Councilman Shuck?
Present.
Let the record show that all seven members of council were either present or here.
I'm gonna count to ten. Six.
The purpose of our meeting tonight is to discuss the third reading and possible passage of the ordinance outlining the designated outdoor refreshment area, or DORA, as it's been called. We have no minutes to approve for the meeting, but we'll move on to committee reports. Does anybody have a committee report? Okay. Is anybody, now, we do have a meeting. We do have a meeting this coming Monday, November 30th, at 6:30 to go over the budget and anything else that comes before the, before the council. Does anybody see a need for another committee of the whole meeting, other than that? Okay. Move on to reports of the officers. You know, it's honor mayor, Aaron D. Mons.
Since this is a special meeting, we usually don't give full reports or anything. I just would like to wish all of city council and members of the public a very happy and safe Thanksgiving. And also, please remember to shop local. Our businesses really need it right now. With Black Friday coming up, the big shopping weekend. I understand you can't find every single product that you may want as a gift for someone here in Tiffin, but I would ask that you at least do the best you can to anything you can buy locally to try to get that done first. Shop local. Our businesses really, really need it right now. It's been a struggle this year. They were shut down for months. So, keep them in mind. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll second that. Clerk of Council, Ann Forrest?
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Director of Finance, Kathy Kaufman?
No report, Mr. President.
Director of Law, Brent Howard?
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Do we have any written communications?
There are no written communications, Mr. President.
Thank you. We're under oral communications. Anybody from the attending public who's listening in, who would like to address city council can do so. The mayor will recognize you and direct your comments to, to the president of the council. Do we have anyone out there, Mayor?
Any members of the public, this is your one and only chance to, that you speak during the meeting. So if there's anyone who would like to speak to city council, please raise your hand. Mr. President, I do have a hand raised. We have Dave Spriggin. I'm going to bring Dave.
Okay.
Dave, you should be there.
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, well, first of all, I hope you all have a happy Thanksgiving. And I just wanted to say thank you for the hard work that you've done for us in many aspects, be it the Tiffin Cares Act, be it this DORA vote, however it lands. You truly are appreciated, and I say that for myself and the downtown retailers committee. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Anyone else, Mayor?
Are there any other hands? There is a button, if you would like to speak this evening, that is raise hand. Just click that. I am not seeing any other hands, Mr. President, so it appears you are good to go.
Okay. I think it might be a good time to, I was reading today Amy Reinhardt's report that went out. There's, there's additional funding for bar and restaurants available through the High Development Services Agency. So I would recommend that anybody listening that's interested in that, in that funding to contact Amy Reinhardt over at TSEP. All right, we'll move ahead to, to ordinances. Councilman Shuff?
Yes, Council President Foote, I'd like to have the clerk read ordinance 20-114, please, and ask for a council passage on that ordinance, please.
Okay, so we have a motion to read to read ordinance 20-114. Is there a second? Councilman Perry?
Yeah, I'll second, Mr. President.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Shuff?
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, just wanted to thank fellow council members here for taking this into consideration, however the vote turns out tonight. I think we've done our due diligence here in having a trial period with this legislation here over the past few months. I was happy to see and have reported from the police chief in our police department that there have been no additional issues or strain on our safety services. I think right now, at this time, it's vitally important that we renew this and give this another shot with our businesses being at half capacity or less than half capacity. All of the business owners I spoke to, whether this, whether they have a liquor license or not, it has been helping them, and it has been a positive factor in their business during these tough times. So I would ask for council to give this good consideration, and hopefully we keep helping our mom and pop shops and keep moving this thing forward to help these people during this tough time.
Okay. We have motion and second to read ordinance 20-114. All those in favor of the motion signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? The motion passes unanimously. The clerk will read the motion, please. Read the ordinance, I'm sorry.
Ordinance number 20-114, introduced by Ty Shuff. Ordinance creating a designated outdoor refreshment area, DORA, for downtown Tiffin, enacting regulations for the DORA, and declaring an emergency.
This is the third reading of ordinance 20-114. Councilman Shuff?
Yes, Council President, I'd like to ask for passage of ordinance 20-114, please.
We have motion to pass ordinance 20-114. Is there a second? Councilman Gillig?
I'd like to second the motion, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. I got about three quick items here about DORA, and then I'll I'm gonna say I'll stand down, but I don't want to say that. I am still looking for three of our fellow council members to join me in turning this 20-114 down at this time. And the reason I'm saying that, there was no rush tonight to pass this. If we turn it down tonight, we still have December, January, February, March, four months during the winter seasons, in my opinion. Hardly anybody is going to be using the DORA during December through March, so that gives us four monthly way. And I guess I'm leaning towards Councilman Leopard. He seems to have common sense. Councilman Gillig, he's a school teacher. He understands my reservations about being in front of Calvert. And Councilman Boyle, I'm hoping she'll join to make four of us and turn this down at this time. I am prepared for people saying, "Councilman Jones, you're against small businesses in downtown Tiffin." I am for small businesses in downtown Tiffin. I believe the small businesses should be tuning into our Zoom meetings and saying, "We do not need this in front of Calvert High School." We need it in front of the businesses, side businesses, in the parking lot, to help the small businesses. Channeling it down in front of Calvert sets the wrong image to myself. Or supporting downtown businesses. Saturday, I drove by Rogers Flowers. There's Mrs. Claus. There's Santa Claus. Three elves waving. I pulled in there, went inside. I'm willing to spend $50 to help a small business. The sales lady is an excellent salesperson. She sold me something I didn't need. She sold me $80 worth of flowers instead of 50. So, for all that, I'm still hoping that three people will vote against this come January, February, March, or April, pass it again without Calvert High School being part of it. So, that's my discussion.
Does anyone else? Councilman Leopard?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm disappointed that the ordinance does not contain tips training. I'm not happy with the boundaries, and my moral compass just does not point in the direction of DORA. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilman Perry?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to reiterate that Calvert is in favor of being a part of DORA, even though Councilman Jones doesn't want Calvert to be a part of it. I don't think he thinks Calvert can think for themselves. And also, I think I got pretty good common sense, and I think DORA is a great thing for the community. I would hate for these businesses to miss out on lost revenue if there is a nice day in January, February, March, that they could take advantage of DORA while Councilman Jones wants them to just stand by and, and wait for us to pass another ordinance in March or April. I don't think that's right. I think we need to pass this thing tonight, and I hope we'll do the right thing.
Thank you. Law Director, you had your hand up?
Yeah, just a point of information on the ordinance. The, the title of the ordinance inadvertently had "and declaring an emergency." If you look back in the text of the ordinance, it doesn't have an emergency on it. So, it would not be appropriate to vote on it as an emergency. What that means is that if it is passed, it will go into effect 30 days after the, the passage. However, the actual DORA created by Section 10 will become effective January 1st, 2021. So just in your procedure, don't call for a vote, a motion and vote on the, the emergency because there isn't any. Okay?
Thank you. Councilwoman Yanatuno?
Thank you, Mr. President. Once again, I wish Councilman Jones would quit making comments. First, we were bubbleheads, and now if we don't agree with him, we don't have common sense. I'm really not happy about that comment. As a 35-year small business owner, once again, I will do anything to help them understand how it feels. This is even worse than I ever dealt with. So I will do whatever I can to support them. As far as bars and restaurants, especially with the tips thing, Councilman Leopard, you'll remember, I actually wanted the tips thing too, until I started thinking about it. Having worked in restaurants in my earlier years, turnover is unbelievable staff-wise. To have them train, every single one of them, just asking a lot. And so, once again, I'm, I'm satisfied that managers are doing that. We're having such a hard time. They don't want to shut down. I was in a local restaurant after church this Sunday. Somebody came in there not wearing a mask. Once again, here goes somebody pushing the edge for knocking these guys out of business. They very nicely asked him, "Go get a mask." He was slightly rude about it, did leave. And so, these guys are struggling. They're trying to do what they can. They're following the rules. I know they'll follow the rules with this. We've had no problems, and so I will be voting yes tonight for those reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mayor Mons can rewind the tape, but I believe I said Councilman Leopard had common sense. I did not say Councilman Perry does not have common sense. I did not say or infer Councilwoman Yanatuno had no common sense. I did not say that. And if Mayor Mons will rewind the tape for the last three minutes, we can review that. Putting that aside, I took it upon myself as second ward city council person to call one of the persons in administration at Calvert High School. If you want me to say who it was, I can do that. He or she said they had no problems with DORA being in front of Calvert High School. Said that it'll teach the students social responsibility. I was not quick enough to think on my feet. I should have said the students can learn social responsibility once they cross Jefferson Street, going towards Madison Street Tavern, Empire 138, Byduck, et cetera. That's where they can learn, or even at home. So, I did take it upon myself, again, just representing the second ward, to get some information myself, and that's what I heard, so.
Okay. Councilwoman Boyle?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I, Councilman Jones, I, I can completely appreciate where you're coming from, from a safety standpoint, and perhaps being concerned about Calvert being effective negatively by, by DORA being there. However, I, I will be voting yes tonight, as, as so many of these businesses have been struggling, and to take away any sort of revenue, whether it be very little during these winter months, or being extremely helpful to them. I, I don't want to prohibit any sort of revenue being, being income for them. I think that the city has done a great job, and the residents of Tiffin have done a great job of, of keeping it a safe environment. And as we've talked many, many times, there have been no issues. So, I, I will be voting yes tonight. Again, I appreciate where you're coming from, from a safety aspect, but I respectfully disagree.
Thank you. Councilman Leopard?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to clarify, my boundary concerns are East Green more so than Calvert. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Jones?
It's awesome. Thank you, Mr. President. And again, I'm, I got broad shoulders. I can take any feedback from the citizens of Tiffin. The people in the second ward, I have not personally gone door-to-door Zoom meetings. I pleaded to second ward personnel, "Call me, text me, stop me, tell me how you feel about subjects." I'm gonna go on record, not one person in the second ward had a yea, I shouldn't say a yea, a nay against DORA. They elected me to represent them with no input from the people of the second ward. I am comfortable voting no on DORA tonight.
Anyone else? Councilman Gillig?
Thank you, Mr. President. For me, it all goes back to our initial discussions for DORA a couple of years back, which, as many of you will recall, we kind of struggled to get off the ground for a bit. At the first meeting, Councilman Shuff and I were the only ones in favor. And then, when we revisited the DORA, Council President Foote, you joined us in the affirmative as well. But it goes back all the way to our early fact-finding days. And I remember when I really sat up and took notice was when Chief Stevens talked about having contacted other communities that had instituted a DORA, and how it had been so successful, and there hadn't been any issues. That's when my ears really perked up, and then I listened to the presentations by Amy Reinhardt and all the good people at TSEP. And then I listened to how strongly our mayor believed in it as well. And I believe that these are folks who love this city and would do anything to help economically or anything to that effect. And I think they've earned our trust, and then when we were able to pass it this past year, I believe that our friends and neighbors have earned that trust as well. Not just our bar and restaurant owners that have successfully implemented the program with little issue, but our friends and our neighbors that are taking advantage of this responsibly. And I also want to commend all of us. You know, Councilman Leopard and, and Councilman Jones, we might be coming down on the wrong side, but I just respect so much that you're voicing these concerns. I mean, shoot, we had a meeting, was it last time, where I believe we discussed DORA for about two and a half hours? And that's great. That dialogue is, is very healthy, but I'm excited to vote yes on this and, and keep this momentum going for the DORA program.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilman Jones?
Thank you, sir. And just to dovetail, Councilman Gillig, I listened in 2019, and I was attending here in 2020, the purpose of DORA, in my opinion, what I took from this in the last going on two years, was to help the bars and restaurants with outdoor seating, to give them extra space since they're limited inside. So if the purpose of DORA was to provide outdoor seating in front, besides, in the parking lots of these restaurants and liquor permit holders, I'm fine with that. It was not intended to move on down to non-liquor holders, such as, whatever it is, Rose Leaf Cafe and Jams. They are not a bar. They're not a restaurant. So I think the purpose was to help the small businesses not to expand it in front of schools.
Anyone else? Councilman Shuff?
Yes, I just wanted to address a few different points here. I completely understand where Councilman Leopard is coming from about the tips training. He said that since day one, I know sometimes here in the city council chambers, we're putting together a package, and there might be 10 bullet points to it. I guess I would just urge sometimes the one bullet point you don't like out of the 10 or 12, whatever it may be. I guess I wouldn't necessarily build down good legislation if you don't like a small percentage of it, but like I said, the majority of the businesses I've talked to are heavily in favor of it. And they've said that this is helping them personally through these tough times, so if we can help them, I think we need to do that. And as far as the tips training goes, if you venture to a lot of the local restaurants and establishments, I think you'll notice that you'll see a lot of the same people working there over the last few years and even beyond, but turnover's a little different now, but then a message for Councilman Jones. If you're gonna build coalition here and try to get votes and rally people to go for something or not go for something, I would probably recommend in the future, maybe not be so insultative to some of your constituents here and your fellow council members. The bubblehead comment did bother me in the past, as Councilman Yanatuno had brought up, and saying that certain ones don't have common sense. I think that shows a lack of respect here for some of the people in the council chambers. Maybe just watch some of those comments, and I think it's kind of uncalled for.
Thank you, Councilman Shuff. Anyone else? Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. To respond to Councilman Shuff, I thought I made it clear. I did not call anyone one, whatever word he used, used.
Bubblehead?
No. Lack of common sense. I did not call any of the six of city council lack of common sense. And your other point is, yes, I agree. 145, 147 Madison Street is one-half of 1% of the entire DORA program. To vote no on it just because of that, I'm just making up percentage, one-half of 1%. I'm still willing to do that because, 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 oh, wait a minute, give me a one-half of 1%. Small, oh, because it made, was clear to me, the second reading, it's all or nothing. We cannot piecemeal this ordinance 20-114, so if it's all or nothing, it's going to be nothing. Thank you.
All right, does anybody else have a comment? Mayor?
Yeah, just a couple of things. First off, Councilman Jones, I can't replay the tape as we're discussing this, so it records, so I'm not able to do that. But, once the meeting is over, anyone can, can listen to the tape. It's on Facebook. It will be uploaded within 24 hours or so to our website. What your statement was, was that you're looking for three other council members with common sense to vote for, vote with you. So, I'm not going to interpret it. Your fellow council members can interpret that for however they want, but at the end of the day, I'm always somebody who, who votes and, and appreciates facts. And I think the facts don't lie here. The fact is that we have had zero police-related issues. Another fact is we have had zero issues, period, with DORA. Another fact is that you're, the ground that you're standing on about the whole Calvert School, the Calvert School Board, the Calvert Administration, they're all on board with this, and they want that area included. And then also fact, sales at downtown businesses, both businesses that sell alcohol and businesses that do not sell alcohol, have increased significantly since DORA went in place. So, I just don't understand, when every fact is this, how we continue to worry about all of these what-ifs and the hyperbole and the scare tactics. So, I would urge city council to move this forward and vote yes tonight and, and get things passed so that we can continue to help our businesses that are struggling mightily right now.
Thanks, Mayor. Does anyone else have a comment? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna ask the clerk to call the vote on the passage of ordinance 20-114.
Councilwoman Boyle?
Yes.
Councilman Gillig?
Yes.
Councilwoman Yanatuno?
Yes.
Councilman Jones?
No.
Councilman Leopard?
No.
Councilman Perry?
Oh, yeah.
Councilman Shuck?
Yes.
Ordinance 20-114 passes with a vote of five to two. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Councilwoman Yanatuno?
Not to belabor things, but didn't we have to vote on an emergency?
There was no emergency.
It is on my paperwork.
I know. Law Director said, go ahead, Brent.
I, I, it was my mistake. I put it in the title, but it was not in the substance of the ordinance. So therefore, you can't vote on it as an emergency. It doesn't need an emergency. I just neglected to delete that language in the title, because it will go into effect 30 days from now. The ordinance will be law, and by language of Section 10, the actual DORA will be established January 1st. So, I'm sorry, Don, you did note that correctly, but no, there is no substantive emergency as a part of the ordinance.
Councilman Gillig?
Thank you, Mr. President. One question and one comment, if I may. Mr. Mayor, where did we land on the East Green property as part of the DORA boundary? I know the foundation was going to have a meeting, and I, I must have missed how that turned out.
Yes, the East Green Foundation voted unanimously to have the, the the site in DORA. They determined that because of there being no issues, and that they would go ahead and they wanted to be included. They loved how we experimented and tried it this year, no issue, so yes, I, I think Councilman Leopard kind of alluded to it earlier, but yes, the East Green Foundation voted unanimously to have it included, and the site owner, Mr. Calnow, also signed off on it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And if I may, switch gears just briefly. If everyone watching in council could just keep in mind our kids here locally. The last couple of weeks have been chaos for them, especially at the middle school and high school. We've gone remote for two weeks, and now we are trying out hybrid, and it's very difficult for a number of them just to have all these changes, so if you can, and they've done, they've been rock stars about it. They really have. But if you could just keep having some good thoughts for them as we continue to make the best of what the situation's presenting, and keep working with our kids.
Thanks, man. Councilman Leopard?
Thank you, Mr. President. This, I'll direct this to either the law director or the mayor. I know we're going to have available to us prior to our committee of the whole meeting, the 2021 budget. The 2021 budget will be published in hard form along with the ordinance. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, we will ensure that council gets a hard copy in their mailboxes as well. You'll receive it electronically for those of you who prefer to, to just look through it either on your computers as we're doing this or whatever. But we will make sure you have printed hard copies for you in your mailboxes also. You'll probably get the electronic version quicker, but yes, you'll have both.
Yeah, that, that was, that was my concern. I, I work off a hard copy in a ruler easier than I can off a computer screen.
Yeah, we're not going to make you print out 100 pages either and try to, try to organize all that. We'll take care of it for you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else? Councilwoman Yonatuno.
Thank you. I just wanted to plead once again with the community, keep our businesses open, shop local. Wear your mask, please wear your mask, social distance, don't make them have to ask you to leave. Please just wear the mask.
Thank you. Councilman Shuff, you had your hand up.
Yeah, just two quick things. Just wanted to say, keep the Boar family hearing your prayers. It's been a tough week for them. They had the funeral today, but Andy Boar was a friend of mine. Was a small business owner here in downtown. She was one of our tenants at the Laird, just real sweet, kind person, is just very tragic with everything that happened with the Boar family here in the last week and just, I, I can't even imagine what that would be like or feel like, so please keep the family in your prayers. Secondly, I wanted to ask the mayor or council or law director here. I'm not going to be around here for, I'll be here till the end of the year, but I wanted to ask the mayor, do you think it would be a wise idea, if anyone is interested in running for my seat, maybe to pay attention or close attention to the budget process or look over the budget? You know, it can be one of the trickier things on council, but forever takes my seat here in the near future, do you think of any of the names that have come forward? Do you think we should at least invite them to the meeting to tune in or give any thoughts or opinion on that, Mayor?
For, I don't think it's my job to, to track down individuals who I may have heard through the rumor mill are interested in running for your seat when you leave. So I guess what I would say is any member of the public who's interested in your council seat, the budget is a public record. All of these meetings are. I would certainly hope anyone who's interested in running for your seat on city council is doing their due diligence and, and watching these meetings. If they're not, it would concern me for sure. But I'm not going to track down people that I've just heard pass secondhand and whatnot to me that I've heard they may be interested. And try to track down contact information. If they're interested in your seat, I think that's part of the responsibilities of a council member or someone running for the office of council member. They've got to ask for the information that they'd like to have because I have no idea. I've heard a lot of potential names and I don't know how many of them are coming forward, so I'm not going to track them down at the same time that we're trying to get things wrapped up this week before that meeting next, next week.
I agree with the mayor. Somebody's really interested in serving on the council, I would think that they would be listening in to these, to our meetings and learning all they could about what's going on.
Yeah, my apologies. I didn't mean for us to have to hunt them down and force them to the meeting. I just want to throw that out there, might be a good education form if they are, any parties that are interested, I guess.
While we got you on the, on the speaker here, Councilman Shuff, have you scheduled a meeting for the, for your committee?
Are you, are you talking about for the legislation that Brent has already begun to prepare?
For Shawnee Avenue and East Perry Street?
Yeah, that's already in the works, I believe. We had an email between a few of us on that.
Okay, all right, very good, thank you. Anyone else? Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just hoping to end the meeting on a lighter note. I took it upon myself to call the Kiwanis Club and get a little more information about the Christmas parade on Saturday, the 5th, at 11:01 at the fairgrounds. And I was half joking, half serious with the lady I spoke with, asked if they had a emcee for the parade. And she said, no, at this point they did not. And I told her I didn't know if the fire truck was going to be out there, but maybe the Grinch could be the Christmas emcee for 2020, since it's been such a sour year. So I'll leave it at that.
Councilman Leopard.
For Councilman Shuff, did I not get invited to the economic development and downtown planning meeting?
We did not have a meeting on that. It was stuff that we had already previously discussed. This was just fine-tuning some legislation here. It's money that council had already appropriated for these projects. Some conversations or emails with the administration, we did not schedule a meeting and had the legislation prepared unless you had an objection to it.
No, I have no objection to it because I thought it was pretty much self-explanatory and the request for legislations and okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, want to wish you all a happy Thanksgiving, all the people tuning into us in our community, the same, stay healthy, stay happy, and God bless all of you. Good night.
Good night.